It has rolled over to eight o'clock, so we're officially ending our work session. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting, Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, January 24. We're beginning our regular session as always. You can pick up our Zoom meetings, at least for the moment, via the Zoom link that you can find at pleasantville-ny.gov, both for our board and all the other boards that are using Zoom at the moment. And within a few days, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting, as well as our work session, at PCTV76.org. So I had a couple of announcements to make, and then we can launch into the rest of our agenda. But the first is obviously, as has been the case painfully for a couple of years, COVID. Cautiously good news, the the numbers within Pleasantville seem to be dropping a bit, and the numbers within the county seem to be dropping a bit. The numbers within New York State are decidedly dropping as well. So certainly, some advisors seem to feel as though the Omicron infections have crested and are sliding down the other side, as has happened in some other countries. Hopefully, that continues. I can report that we get the positive numbers for residents of the Village of Pleasantville on a daily basis. Those numbers are just people who were tested through a system tagged into the state system. And so it does not include anybody who might have been tested and found positive through a home self-test. That doesn't end up in the database. And so there's still a whole lot of numbers out there. We're still getting 10, 15, occasionally 20 new positives in a day, so it's still out there. But certainly very good news, the numbers are looking better. And certainly very good news that Westchester County has a pretty impressive vaccination profile with well over 90% of adults having had at least one dose. So just want to remind everybody that the options are many for getting tested and for getting a booster. Let me share my screen. So you can get to this page at health.westchester.gov.com, and this gives you lots of easy ways to tag into where you can get free testing, where you can get information about vaccines or boosters, as well as a whole lot of other information. So just to make clear that Westchester County has reopened the county center as a testing and a vaccine center, but that testing is just for folks who are symptomatic or have had a known exposure. It is not for people looking just to check to know or because of advanced travel. So if you're interested in finding out what your options are for where to go for a test or a vaccine or a booster, one good place to go is health.westchester.gov.com. So while I'm on this page, let me go back to our website, pleasantville-ny.gov. A couple of things to remind you of, one of which I reminded you of last week. If you go here to Citizen Action Center Sanitation Schedule lookup, you can type in your address and find out about your sanitation schedule. The other thing it reminds you of is that we are now part of the Westchester Sustainable Westchester Recycle Right app. And right here on this page is a link to download it, both for Apple smartphones and for Android. It's a great tool. You can either do this on the web or on your smartphone. You can download the app and you can get a reminder automatically emailed to you, hey, today's paper, tomorrow is bouncing cans, whatever it may be. And it's a great, 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 great asset for folks when there are holiday weeks, as we've recently been through a series of them. And it's hard to remember exactly how your schedule has changed in the holiday week. And you know, in the week, for example, after Christmas, we add an additional pickup and that all gets fed into the system. So great way to take a look. And then I reminded folks of this the last time, but I will do so again. If you scroll down to Police Reform and Reinvention, first item in this left column, the Weekly Blotter Summary, gives you the chance to click into the Weekly Police Blotter, which is part of the process, a result of the process we went through last year, to think about ways to make the activities of the police more transparent. So if that interests you, here's a way to get it. And again, back to the homepage, pleasantville-ny.gov. If you click to News and Announcements, you can sign up and choose which kinds of news and announcements you want to get. In which case, for example, if you are interested in the police blotter, you could get that email to you automatically, as well as the Janus for our board or various other boards. So it's really, really, really a great, great, great tool for us to be able to be in touch with you. So I encourage everybody to get themselves to pleasantville-ny.gov and take advantage of the resources that we have set up there. So anybody else have any announcements or comments to add to the mix?
I wanted to just bring up the, I guess, the committee that, that I guess Nicole started for the Police Community Outreach. That we're still figuring the name. I think we're almost close to coming up with the name, but there was a lot of report backs that the residents really liked the blotter. They really found it interesting just to see all the different things that the police department is doing. So they're really appreciative of the fact that that's there. So I think that that was a positive feedback on that. And we're hoping that that's just, you know, the beginning of this kind of community outreach that we can have to have a better dialogue between the police department and the residents of Pleasantville. So I just wanted to commend the police departments for getting that on there and having it more transparent to see what exactly our police officers are doing.
Great. Thank you, Paul. And thank you for reminding folks of that committee that we started to establish another avenue of connection between the police and the community. And I might also note, and more will be known about this soon, but the county has also stood up some substantially improved resources that can benefit all of Westchester communities to provide resources and near-term help in circumstances where folks with special needs or potentially folks who are confronting a mental health crisis can be dealt with both effectively and humanely with the assistance of folks with special training in the field. So that was a subject that lots of folks in Pleasantville made comments about in our discussions. And I know that happened all around the county. And one of the things the county has done is to establish at least the beginnings of a program that gives us resources to reach out to. That's obviously short of the realization of the capacity to have a specialized responder to every community at every circumstance, but steps in the right direction. So any other comments or questions or whatever? All right. Are there any comments from the public, any attendees? If you had a comment, feel free. Now would be the time. Raise your hand if you had something you wanted to ask us or comment about. All right. There being none, let's go to the agenda. I will share my screen. All right. Number six, Paul.
Result that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of regular meeting held on January 10, 2022.
Is there a second? Comments, questions, corrections to the minutes? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. David, number seven.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2022 as listed below. $2,539 from a 1990.400 contingent to a 3120.488 police software. $4,600 from a 1990.400 contingent to a 5110.423 street maintenance signs for a total of $7,139.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? Eric, anything to add to this? Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. The, that's the, the software for the PD's ticketing system and then the moving money to street maintenance sign for the new signs in Memorial Plaza as we roll out the pay stations.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number eight, Michael.
Resolved that based upon the recommendation of the Village Assessor, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following small claim settlements for the Village Assessment Year 2021, 2022 for parcel ID 106.6-3-57, 13 Country Club Lane. There was a reduction of taxes of 65431. Sorry, I guess I'll read them all. Original assessment was $69,900. Reduced assessment $63,200 per reduction in taxes of $654.31 for parcel ID 106.7-2-21, 16 Seneca Lane. The original assessment was $50,500. Reduced assessment $50,000 for reduction in taxes of $48.83. Parcel ID 106.9-1-5, 107 Chote Lane. Original assessment $52,200. Reduced assessment $41,900 for a reduction of taxes of $1,005.88. Parcel ID 106-7-3-41, 65 Lake Street. Original assessment of $94,200. Reduced assessment $90,500 for a reduction in taxes of $361.33.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is the result of small claims settlements for folks who took their tax grievance to a small claims assessment review.
That's correct. And, and on that night, on that note, Tax Grievance Night is upcoming on Tuesday, February 15th from 5 to 9.
Which is going to be both in-person at Clinton Street, but also hybrid so that board members and, and grievance can, can, can visit by Zoom if they choose to.
That's correct.
And then I just want to add, we are expecting one more small claims, but the parcel ID in the court document was incorrect. So it's gone back to have that corrected, but you'll see that in one of the upcoming meetings, one more.
Okay. Thank you, Norrie. All right. Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Number nine, back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the ask for payment of claims dated January 24, 2022 for the fiscal year of 2022. Covering check numbers 102576 through 102677. General Fund $260,058.73. Water Fund $24,003.18. Capital Fund $3,0185.91. Refuge Fund $15,967.87 for a total of $303,215.69. All the payment of these claims are attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the payment of claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Again, for anyone watching, be reminded you can click into these blue links and see all the detail, every line item built into these numbers. David, number 10.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Village Administrator to sign the request for access to the New York State Internet Government Solutions and Equitable Business Opportunities System attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wow, Eric.
Yep.
So this is the business of managing the federal grant.
Yeah, yeah. So we would register the, the village through the system and then the low bidder would have to register as well and start completing their end of the questionnaire.
Okay. Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Welcome to IGS and EBO. Michael, number 11.
Whereas the state legislature and the governor enacted legislation that establishes a property tax cap on the amount that a local government's property tax levy can increase each year. And whereas under this law, the total amount to be raised through property taxes charged on the municipality's taxable assessed value of property will be capped at 2% of the, or the rate of inflation, whichever is less, with some exceptions. And whereas state legislation provides for local governments to override the cap to protect them from unforeseen financial circumstances. And whereas state legislation requires that in the event that an override is necessary, the law enabling it must already have been adopted by the Board of Trustees prior to the adoption of the fiscal year budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, February 14, 2022 at 8:00 PM to be held via teleconference to hear comments on introductory local law one of 2022 overriding the property tax cap for Village Fiscal Year 2022, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to be clear, we're soon to be into our budget process for the fiscal year that begins June 1. But we've established long ago that it is prudent to establish this process so that in the event, which is by no means certain, but in the event that we find it necessary to override the tax cap, we have this already in place in advance. So don't misunderstand, this isn't a decision to override the tax cap. It is simply a decision to put the bureaucratic requirements in place so that if we found it necessary, we would have the capacity to do so. And also recall that regardless of a decision to override or not, the village budget, when it is posted in draft in what, late March, Eric? Will be available to all. And in the end, there'll be a public discussion of its contents as well as a public hearing. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to you, Paul 12. Dear Paul, you're getting the good ones.
Resolution 12, whereas a project for Manville Road Corridor Improvements, Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, PIN 8761.83, the project is eligible for funding under the New York State Program administered by the New York State Department of Transportation, New York State DOT, and whereas a sum not to exceed 102,273 in program funding is available to progress the project. And whereas the Village of Pleasantville desires to advance the project by making a commitment of 100% of the state share of the costs of the construction, construction inspection and construction supervision. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pleasantville Village Board hereby approves the above-subject project. And it is hereby further resolved that the Pleasantville Village Board hereby authorizes the Village of Pleasantville to pay in the first instance 100% of the cost of the construction, construction inspection and construction supervision work for the project or portions thereof. And it is further resolved that the sum of 102,273 is hereby made available to cover the cost of the participation in the above phase of the project. And it is further resolved that in the event that the full state shares cost of the project exceeds the amount of the appropriate above, appropriated above, the Pleasantville Village Board shall convene as soon as possible to appropriate said excess amount immediately upon the notification by the Pleasantville Village Administrator thereof. And it is further resolved that the Pleasantville Village Administrator be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary agreements, certifications or reimbursement requests for state aid on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville with the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project and the municipality sponsors first instance funding of project costs and permanent funding of the local share and state aid eligible project cost. And all project costs within appropriations therefore are not so eligible. And it is further resolved that a certified copy of the resolution be filed with the New York State Commissioner of Transportation of State of New York by attaching it to any necessary agreement in connection with the project between the Village of Pleasantville and the State of New York. And it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric. What's the summary?
Yeah. So the, the summary here is the DOT had secured for the village an additional 100,000, which was going to be allocated from a pot of federal funds. They have switched gears and instead are actually allocating $100,000 from a state allocation. So same, same number, just different funding source. What happened to that federal share, I'm not sure. But they did fund the money through their own funding sources.
All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Here's hoping your next round is a short one, Paul. David, number 13.
Resolve the Board of Trustees has reviewed the amount of, the account of unpaid taxes for fiscal year and 2022 as presented by the Village Treasurer and certifies that the accounts in the tax rule have been compared and found to be correct in the total amount of taxes unpaid.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So this is an annual process and there are, I think, 99 tax bills in arrears, something like that. 250 some odd thousand, I think, is the total number. Obviously, that is, in some cases, folks who just have had an oversight, in other cases, folks who may be seeking to delay the payment. It's a tough way to borrow money because of the penalties that are attached. We encourage you to catch up. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Michael, 14.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator or Superintendent of Parks and Recreation to sign the agreement with Northeast Westchester Special Recreation Incorporated for the purpose of jointly operating a therapeutic recreation program for individuals with disabilities as per their agreement dated January 1, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a longstanding relationship with us and quite a few other northern Westchester communities? Anything to add to it, Eric?
Nope. It did go up by a couple hundred dollars, but a reasonable amount, given the environment we're currently working in and well worth the money.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
I wholeheartedly support that organization.
I do too.
It's, it's doing a great job.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to Paul 15. Short look.
There you go. Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby waives a 30-day notice requirement to local municipalities for a liquor license applied by Jacob Burns Film Center, 364 Manville Road, to the New York State Liquor Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I visited with the, the folks at the Burns and they are working on a plan to develop a modest food service operation on their third floor. All the way at the top in, in the gallery space, the Jane Pet Gallery. Really looking for an opportunity to create a little bit of a hangout space for folks who might come before or after a movie. Certainly not envisioning to turn that into a major crowded venue. And they've asked us to waive the 30-day notice, which we have done in many other circumstances. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. David, 16.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby accept the donation to the Clinton Street Center, CM 0085, from Lois Russo, in the amount of $25. Thank you, Lois.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Echo David's thoughts. Thank you, Lois. She's also recalling someone who was an active bridge player at Clinton Street. It's a tight group of folks over there and we appreciate this support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Michael, 17.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate decrease from $25 to $20, Recreation Department, effective January 24, 2022. For, for Lynn Parsons, I guess it should have said.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
What's the story here, Eric?
So Lynn is now a part-time parlor club employee. She was a site supervisor. So given that she's only going to be able to work a handful of days per week, the department's going to select another site supervisor at the rate of $25 an hour.
Understood. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. 18, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of the following part-time recreation assistant, job code 0269. Elena M. Garcia at $50 an hour, effective January 19, 2022, part-time available for the program of after-school A7324.101.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric? This is a $50 post?
Yes, $50 an hour. That's typically the, the pay for after-school programming. That's revenue generating. So these are a couple hours a day and their, their expense is covered by the, the revenue that the program creates.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 19, where were we? David? Did I have that right? Yes.
I got it. Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes RJB towing to be the authorized towing service for the Village of Pleasantville.
Is there a second?
Second.
That arise from a bid process, Eric?
No. Our current vendor sold the business to RJB Towing, who was interested in carrying on the relationship with the village.
Understood. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. That was the last, I'll stop my share, was, that was the last of our agenda items. Any further comment on any subject or new business? Is there any comment from a member of the public? Raise your hand if you wish to add a comment. All right. Seeing none, I just had one thing I wanted to add that I might have said upfront, and that is that as, as perhaps you know, Governor Hochul has presented the outlines of, of her first forthcoming state budget. The legislature is in the business of reviewing all of that. There are some items that are matters of concern here in Westchester. I am the Legislative Chair of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association and am headed to a New York Conference of Mayors meeting in Albany for a couple of days in February where the political lay of the land will be discussed, as well as the priorities that exist both statewide and within each of our regions, headed towards an effort to lobby our Westchester Delegation Assembly and Senate to, to get a few things achieved. So I'll have more to say about that. We're working out our five or six high priority items, but I can report, we have some evergreen items that are on the list annually and have yet to be achieved. So hope springs eternal. I might also add, and it isn't a matter that we're engaged with as a board, but there's quite a bit of controversy, as there always is, about the redistricting that's associated with the new census numbers. And the, the committee that has developed maps has developed some internal disagreement between the two parties and the results are very much unclear, other than the clarity that at least some of the proposals that have been made would, would change our representation or potentially change it, or at least change the district as they're now drawn. So if that's a matter of interest or concern to you, I encourage you to hunt around a little bit in the news and, and on the web, and you can see what's going on. There have been some competing memos from two sides coming back. There have been some competing memos from two sides coming back and claiming the other has been recalcitrant. And I don't profess to have an opinion on the subject, other than one wishes this process could be simpler and more transparent, so more later. So if there's nothing further, can I have a motion to return to work session for a last item, which is a revisiting of our discussion of the De Bruin Engineering Proposals regarding Nana Hagan Dam and Pond Flooding, followed up by an executive session to discuss personnel and real property. If there's such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I, motion approved. So I thank you for your attention. As mentioned, you can pick this up on an on-demand webcast at PCTV76.org. We will be back in February on Valentine's Day, February 14th.
Valentine's Day, oh boy.
Yeah.
I did not, I was unaware of that.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yep. We may need to add a resolution, Paul.
We may have to, if I want to continue to be on this board.
I will unfortunately be on vacation that week, so.
Go into it, all of you, regardless of where you all are. Come on.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all. This is the end of our regular session, Return to Work Session. We'll keep the recording going for the discussion revisiting Bob De Bruin's proposals. And then we will depart and reconvene in a confidential executive session.